When you're ready, President Bola.
All right. Roll call, the meeting will come.
Recording in progress.
That's the first time I did that. The meeting will come to order. May I have the roll call, please?
Trustee Willna?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Oh, here, sorry.
Here. Trustee Hoffman?
Here.
Trustee Moreno?
Here.
Trustee Vela?
Here.
Trustee Verres? Trustee Martinez?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will have the flag salute and today from AFT 1521A, here present here at the ESC, Ms. Hazel Alonso, to state the pledge of allegiance, if we could stand.
For those that would like to join, please put your hand on your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to the public. How many people do we have present here today? What this? Sixty-three. So, we're gonna read, I'm gonna read a statement with regard to Ukraine. Before I do that, we have seen some extraordinary violence, not only around the world, but in Brooklyn and in Sacramento, and also acknowledging that there's more violence occurring throughout the country and the world in general. I'm gonna read this statement in Ukrainian. Trustee Vela is going to read it in Spanish, the same statement, and Trustee Henderson is going to read it in English. This meeting is also being translated in writing. What do you call that underneath? Yeah, closed caption in Spanish. So, it's the first meeting that that is done, acknowledging and understanding that we're in a multi-language world. For those who speak Ukrainian, I will get words wrong. There's even a possibility that I mispronounce every single word. I apologize in advance, so please get the intent. If I miss, if there is a meaning that I missed, you can count on my colleagues to clarify that in both Spanish and in English. So, here we go. Team shuko, slukayut, zyukranin, ta yukranitsam, shoko, shukayut, pricuko, poshivuto, Los Angeles. Mi vatajemo vas. Naši dervi pirični, jak vi šukavete, petučko i butjeke maju vetni. Jaki bi ne buvet ti šakje, peru beveči i Los Angeles mi vaj partner zyukraniko ta yukranetski.
A los que escuchan desde Ucrania y los ucranios que buscan refugio en todo el mundo y Los Ángeles, te damos la bienvenida. Al llegar nuestras puertas están abiertas al buscar refugio y construir un futuro. Cualquiera su camino mientras se encuentre en Los Ángeles. Somos socio con todos los ucranios.
Trustee Henderson?
To those listening from Ukraine and Ukrainians seeking refuge around the world and Los Angeles, we welcome you. As you arrive, our doors are open as you seek refuge and build a future. Whatever your path, while in Los Angeles, we are your partner with Ukraine and Ukrainians.
Thank you very much. Today, we would like to adjourn the meeting in the memory of Mr. Harvey Wright, Dr. Don Seguchi, and Ms. Laura Peterson. Mr. Harvey Wright was a thirty-four-year business professor from Los Angeles City College, who retired in nineteen eighty-three. He was born on September fourth, nineteen nineteen, and lived to over a hundred and two years old, passing on March sixth, twenty twenty-two. After his military service, Mr. Wright earned his teaching credential at USC in nineteen forty-eight in Business Administration and Social Studies. He began his employment with LACC in nineteen forty-five, where he taught business and later served as an administrator coordinator. Mr. Wright worked extensively with the surrounding community to see what the latest business needs were for his students, and he employed attending the many theater department plays each year. His daughter wrote, "Dad loved his time at LACC and was truly dedicated to those he worked with, both staff and students. He inspired all three of his children to be teachers. That's what kind of man he was. He was appreciated of the support of Los Angeles Community College." So, to the family of Mr. Wright, our sincere condolences. It's also important to recognize that Mr. Wright was working at LACC D prior to the existence of LACC D as an organizational entity. Mr. Donald Don Seguchi was a retired member of the East Los Angeles Community, who passed away on January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, at the age of eighty-six. He served in the US Navy and on his return attended ELAC, where he met his wife of sixty-one years. Ms. Yatsuko Hamamoto. Ms. Yatsuko Hamamoto. Mr. Seguchi began his teaching career at ELAC in nineteen sixty-eight and went on to serve in various tenure, from faculty assistant dean to vice president of academic affairs. He retired in nineteen ninety-five, but stayed on with the college until two thousand and three, working at various projects for ELAC. Through LACC D, he administered an educational program for the US Air Force of Japan for through. Mr. Don Seguchi is survived by his wife, Yatsuko, and children David, Carol, Jonathan, Peggy, and Diana Seguchi, Travis, his six grandchildren, and many nieces and nephews. Again, our condolences to the family and Mr. Donald Don Seguchi. Ms. Laura Peterson was a professor, beloved friend, and colleague at West LA College for fourteen years. She passed away on February eighth, twenty twenty-two, due to cancer. Ms. Peterson was a natural leader who led by action and by a strong commitment to social justice, collegiality, and student success. In her fourteen years at West, she wore many hats, such as division chair at West Arts and Performance Division and faculty at the Motion Picture and Television Production Program. Laura, together with Kevin Constandine, pioneered West's unique partnership with Hollywood cinema production resources, where students are able to pursue a path into the entertainment industry, unions, and learn specialized skills from highly experienced industry professionals who are masters in their trade. She was energized by helping provide pathways to employment for students who otherwise may not have had the opportunity. Her enthusiasm transcended the classroom to help students connect with their purpose. Again, our condolences. Ms. Peterson's legacy and accomplishments went far beyond West. She was the chief planning officer for the Challengers Boys and Girls Club and Metro LA, where she raised money to build them a new facility, wrote grants, and helped expand their program. She was also a specialist in the field of childcare, developing childcare centers, and work families related programs and services for major studios and corporations across Southern California. Ms. Laura Peterson was also a strong union activist and participant in most AFT fifteen-twenty-one faculty guild meetings and actions on campus and district-wide, as well as serving as the guild's representative and the co-chair of West Facilities Committee for many years. Her imprint on the academic division and the programs that she led are indelible. Her values and dedication to our students are living testimony of her work, determination, and dreams, and they continue to live on in these programs. For all her colleagues at West, it is bittersweet that Ms. Laura Peterson won't be present for the unveiling of the new fifteen thousand square foot motion pictures and television training facility, which is a massive deal. She worked tirelessly to get the facility built, and this achievement is another huge part of her legacy, the legacy of a true warrior for education and social justice. On behalf of the entire Los Angeles Community College District community, we extend our deepest condolences to the Wright, Seguchi, and Peterson families. And I'll add that if her children could be in attendance and be invited to be speakers, I think that would be appropriate for that as well. And, okay, so approval, next, moving on to approval of the agenda order of business. Before we move to approve the order of business, today's meeting, Chancellor, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Board President Bola, members of the board, good morning. There are three changes that I'd like to bring to your attention, pardon me, actually four, to the posted agenda. The first is a typographical error in item M eight. Item M eight, resolution for the twenty-twenty-two California Community College Trustees Board of Directors election. That item should state that there are six seats, six seats, for up for reelection, not seven, so please make that change. The second change is a typographical error in the facility's item EE one, EE one, and that relates to a chilled water storage project at LA City College. This item should read that this is an acceptance of completion of contract, not construction, contract, completion of contract. Please make that change. This item should also include measure CC or measure J is mentioned, so we make that for the record. Then, we also would like to withdraw two employment actions, items P three and items FF one. Items P three and FF one. So, if you can note those four changes, the rest of the agenda is presented and would like to be considered as presented. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda and order of business with the requested amendments?
Go move.
Is there a second?
Second.
President Bola, can I ask a question? This is Trustee Hoffman from Zoom. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Chancellor, can I ask the reason for pulling those two employment action items? One of them, I understand, came to us before. We had sent it back to the Personnel Commission, and I'm just wondering, is that on the request of the actual employee or is there another reason?
This, if I may answer the question, Mr. President?
Yes.
Yes, technical reviews and revisions, if necessary. We don't expect them. I expect the items to be back on the agenda, as you see them on May the fourth. So, just a little delay for some technical support.
Any other comments? Roll call?
Trustee, I do have a comment, and I apologize if I'm not gonna do the mute correctly here. I did have a question. I was wondering on the P three, if there was an opportunity in the closed session to ask the question. But I know it's requested to be tabled, but if we can allow it for a moment in the closed session today to clarify a question.
It's on the agenda.
No, no, but he's pulling it. That if it can be continued, but in the closed session.
Oh, understood, okay.
From there, it could be tabled, because I do want to ask a few questions with the body together. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and just for the record, members of the board, we do have these items monthly on the closed session agenda, in the event there are any questions, both on the public agenda or otherwise, so it can be discussed.
Okay. Roll call?
Trustee Martinez advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bola?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
I'm gonna abstain.
Thank you. Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
Yes.
Trustee Verres?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any signed, Lupe? This is when we're on to request to address the board on regular items C one and C two. Are there any persons signed up to address the board on regular items C one and C two?
Yes, sir. We have eight individuals for C one and C two.
You mean B one?
Not moving them in.
It's B one, yes.
Yeah, I think we mean B one, just to be, just to be clear.
Yes, B one, but for items C one and C two, correct.
Okay, okay. So, we're going to, we have, we're gonna start with B one, request to address the board of trustees regarding, again, this is with regard to the appointment. Is Congressman, is Assemblyperson Mike Fong present? Congressman Judy Chu, are the speakers here?
Yes.
Okay, Congressman Judy Chu?
Well, thank you for letting me be here.
Congresswoman, I apologize.
Oh.
Sorry.
Today, you are taking such an important vote that I just had to be here. As the only former full-time faculty member of the LA Community College District who serves in Congress, I care deeply about the students in this district. I served LACC D for twenty years, with eight years at Los Angeles City College and twelve years at East Los Angeles College. I taught hundreds and hundreds of students and came to know their hopes, their dreams, and their obstacles. They need somebody on the board of trustees who will guide them to a better future, and Kelsey Eno is clearly that person. She is a graduate herself of a community college who went on to earn a doctorate in education. She's devoted herself as a community college counselor for having advised them in everything from basic skills to STEM to health science. She's also been a leader in her community college as president of El Camino Colleges Federation of Teachers and board member of the College Foundation. Her commitment to making community colleges better serve students is unquestionable. But there's another reason that I believe you should appoint Kelsey Eno. In line with the diversity of LACC D's student body, there's been an AAPI member of the Board of Trustees for many years. With Mike Fong leaving, there is a void, but that void can be filled with Kelsey. AAPIs are sixteen percent of Los Angeles County. AAPIs have also experienced two years of horrendous anti-Asian hate crimes and incidents, which now total eleven thousand nationally. Anti-Asian hate was stoked by President Trump, who used terms such as China virus and kung flu to direct blame against Asians. He took advantage of the invisibility of AAPIs to some in the society who think that the representation of AAPIs doesn't matter. Please do not let AAPIs become invisible on the LA Community College Board. With someone as highly qualified as Kelsey, with someone of Kelsey's tremendous expertise, this district and all its students will benefit immensely. And that's why I urge you to appoint Kelsey Eno to the LA Community College Board of Trustees. Thank you.
On the line? Mike Fong, is Mike Fong on?
Thank you so much, President Bola. Can you hear me?
We can. I just wanted to say, welcome, Assemblyman Fong.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, President Bola. So, good to see you, and good morning, LACC Board of Trustees, Mr. Chancellor and colleagues, and thank you, Congresswoman Judy Chu, for those very eloquent remarks. And thank you to all of you for your amazing leadership. Today, I'm calling in to voice my one hundred percent support for Dr. Kelsey Eno for LACC Board of Trustees. Dr. Eno's been a longtime champion of student success and would hit the ground running. She is somebody who understands our challenges within the community college system, student population and communities, and she's somebody who's very much been involved with the Little Tokyo community, with the AAPI community in Los Angeles. And as you heard from our Congresswoman, she's also somebody who's been on a community college counseling faculty for fifteen years and is a board member for the Little Tokyo Service Center and has backing from many of the AAPI community leaders and groups. As you heard from our Congresswoman, Los Angeles County has approximately sixteen percent AAPI population, and I was very honored to serve on the board with all of you here in advancing the causes of the community going forward. And we hope to, and join each and every one of you to express my one hundred percent support for Dr. Kelsey Eno for the LACC Board of Trustees, seat number seven. See Mr. Warren Fortani here on the call as well, and to all the community leaders that have joined us here today in supporting Dr. Kelsey Eno for the LA Community College District Board of Trustees. And so, good to see each and every one of you. She's super committed to addressing issues within the district, addressing declining enrollment, to look at funding stabilization issues, to provide student access to resources, and would be a great, amazing leader for the Los Angeles Community College District. Thank you so much for your time and consideration, proud to join you here today and proud to support Dr. Kelsey Eno for LACC Board of Trustees, seat number seven. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Assemblyperson.
Thank you, Assemblyperson and former trustee Fong. Mr. Warren Fortani, thank you very much. Former trustee and former assemblyperson Warren Fortani, you're on.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good morning, trustees, Chancellor, and folks in the audience. It's a pleasure to be able to address the Board of Trustees for the LA Community College District. Some of you may know that I served on Board of Trustees for ten years, and after following Kathleen Brown Rice, who went from the Community College Board to the State Assembly, I then followed the same path. After being elected to the Community College Board of Trustees, I then was elected to the State Assembly, just like Miguel Santiago and Sidney Kamloger, and now Mike Fong. And Mike Eng did it in reverse. He was in the Assembly first and then went to the Community College Board. So, there's a pretty well-used path now from the local Community College Board of Trustees to the state legislature, which is important relative to understanding where policy originates and budget originates and state capital. The reason I'm addressing the board today, the things I liked most about LA Community College relative to community college education in general, was that at the level of higher education, it is really truly the people's college. We don't have to have special programs to deal with diversity relative to our student body. We don't have to have special hiring practices in order to make sure we have diversity at our campuses relative to staff, relative to our professors and our teachers. Community college is really based on the most important part of the higher education system, because we're the only segment that doesn't ask and talk about who we don't take, because we take everybody. And I think that's the basis for the importance of appointing Dr. Kelly Eno to the Board of Trustees. As a member of the Board of Trustees, I was the second API elected after Julie Wu. And then, as a part of that effort, being a part of the Los Angeles community family, being able to make sure that we have access and diversity represented at every level is really critical. And that's why Dr. Eno is so important to be appointed to the seat being vacated by Mike Fong. Also, she brings with her not only the experience of being from the API community, but even more importantly, she's a community college person. When you can call on someone like ex-president Ernie Moreno to really understand how a college is run, when you can have people like Audra and also Michelle relative to understanding how teaching goes on in terms of community college, you can talk to Kelly, who's also a counselor at El Camino Community, south end of LA County, harbor gateway between Gardena and Torrance. El Camino is a community college that is really highly revered in our neighborhood. I myself went to LA Harbor College, but El Camino College actually was closer to where I lived. But if you look at El Camino College, you can see that it's one of the prominent community colleges in the southern part of the county, just like LA Harbor County, and they have a great program and been around for a long time. More importantly, because Kelly is a counselor, she understands the new community college student, which is really, I think, the most fundamental challenge relative to any level of education, public education in the state of California. And that's the fact that our students have changed. The demography, the demographics, the locations of where our students are coming from reflects the diversity unseen anywhere in the United States that we have here in LA County. So, diversity is the key, and I think diversity is critically important. So, I really highly recommend, and I really think that it's important, that you appoint Kelly Eno to the vacancy that Mike Fong has left as he goes forward to the California State Legislature. Thank you for this opportunity to be able to put this morning. Love community college. I'm excited about community college, even during these times. Community college should be the institution of higher education that really shines because of its creativity, its versatility, and to be able to deal with the challenges that we see every day in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, former assemblyperson and former trustee, Mr. Warren Fortani. Thank you very much. Alan Cosson?
Good morning, Chancellor and the board. As a one-and-a-half-generation Filipino member, it is important to have leaders who look like me, especially on the LACC Board of Trustees, seat seven. I am strongly urging you to appoint Dr. Kelsey Eno for this seat. She has been the Community College Council faculty over fifteen years, so she knows what our students need, which is more access and equity. She is also a faculty unit member and a president at El Camino College AFT thirteen eighty-eight, so she knows what faculty needs in the classroom. She is a board member of the Tokyo Service Center, which I actually volunteered as an undergraduate student back in the late nineteen nineties. She is very, very active in the LA community organizing and advocacy, and this is why I'm urging you to support her. As a US Navy veteran and served as a lieutenant in the US Supply Corps in this position, I was able to encourage other Asian-Americans shipmates to step up for these positions in my unit. I know that Dr. Eno can do the same, so let's do this, especially during the AAPI Heritage Month. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Kathleen Yasuda?
Good morning, Chancellor Rodriguez, trustees, and other members in the audience. I, I'm here to support Dr. Kelsey Eno, because like me, she loves community colleges and what it does for our students, for our communities. She is, as a counselor, she has to deal with every day, all the barriers, all the issues, all the life stories that students come to. And she is a team player, understanding what needs to do, what, how the college can help each student and get them to their goals. So, she, I think, is the perfect person to join you all, trustees, on the board. I've also been asked to represent APALA, the Asian-Pacific American Labor Alliance. They took a vote last night to support, so they are also endorsing Dr. Kelsey Eno. They asked me to bring that message to you trustees. But again, as a faculty member, I think it's, let's see, I came when my daughter was born, so twenty-three years here at LA Trade Tech, as a faculty member, with experience and all the ups and downs and all the things that are going on in our district and our college, that I firmly support Dr. Kelsey Eno in becoming a trustee of the LA Community College District, because she will be a great team player. As a counselor, she understands all the issues our teacher, our students face. And I know her personally as someone who passionately cares about our students and our colleges and making sure that they continue into the future to support our students and our communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Greatly appreciated. Mr. Zach Knorr?
Yes, hello. Thank you, Chancellor and trustees, for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Zach Knorr. I teach at LA Valley College. I just want to give my support for Kelsey Eno, Dr. Kelsey Eno, for the open board seat. Dr. Eno has been a counselor at her community college for Um Dr. Eno has been a counselor at um her community college for over fifteen years. So not only does that mean that she understands how our community colleges work, but I think most importantly, um additionally, with her experience as being a community college student, Dr. Eno understands the experiences of our students. Um I think that's incredibly important to have on the board, and I think we couldn't possibly find a better candidate for this position. Dr. Eno is endorsed by teachers' organizations, student organizations, community organizations. And as we've seen today, um we've had three former uh board members and, you know, very impressive politicians who for her as well. So um I just want to echo all the comments that have come before me and encourage you all to um appoint uh Dr. Eno to the open board position. Um thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mister Nor. Um Ms. Grace Chi.
Uh good morning, uh uh trustee Bwana and uh uh Chancellor Rodriguez and the rest of the Board of Trustees. Uh as you know, I am Grace Chi, the West Chapter President of the AFT fifteen twenty-one here at the LACC. And I also uh am a member of the COPE, a Committee on Political Education, where we voted unanimously to support uh Kelsey Eno. Uh she has been uh supported by the California Federation of Teachers and staff by uh Jeff Freitas. And uh she's also, as you know, a member of the Federation of Labor, AFL-CIO. And uh she has been uh voted unanimously to to support as Board of Trustees by the AFT fifteen twenty-one COPE. Um also, uh we're honored to be joined by Congresswoman Judy Chu, who mentioned the sixty percent of the Asian Pacific Islander community in LA. But we are vastly uh in terms of LACC faculty and staff. Um and our students, uh our API students are growing. Uh however, and so I hope that she is uh not under, that API communities are not underrepresented of trustees, and as we go forward in terms of trying to increase our enrollment. Uh but uh probably what I'd like to say is that the reason she should be um uh the uh the next Board of Trustee is because she is really the best candidate who happens to be a woman of color. She loves our faculty, she loves our students, she loves um really understands the community colleges and how we can grow and how we can um really serve our communities. So uh again, uh I'm Grace Chi, the West Chapter President and a member of COPE that voted unanimously, and I really seek uh your support in uh choosing Kelsey Eno as the next Board of Trustee. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Mister John McDowell.
Good morning, trustees, Chancellor, and everyone today. How fortunate for us that Dr. Kelsey Eno is willing to serve on our Board of Trustees. You've just heard now how experienced she is and how respected by people that we respect. Uh she's a true leader at the college, at her union, in the community, both a leader and a uh volunteer and in the statewide system. Ask anyone in all these areas how she works, and they'll say that she's a team player, and she makes a difference every time she's there. We're in a crisis right now, down enrollment thirty percent, and when hall, hold harmless ends, we could lose two hundred million dollars or more unless we turn things around. Kelsey understands what, well, student services, financial aid, budgets, Prop ninety-eight, and much more. I've seen her in Sacramento uh helping to get better laws and budgets, not just for El Camino College, but for the entire system. And the uh as as Zach said, in her fifteen years as a counselor, every day she helps students. Many of them who are struggling in poverty, food, and housing, and security, working for their families, eating books, tools, childcare, students often underserved and underrepresented. Trustees, she's like you. She wants to work side by side with you to help back, bring back our students and help them to be better successful. And by the way, hold everyone accountable because that is needed to be, to make things happen. So no doubt that you'll be proud and thankful to bring Dr. Kelsey Eno onto the board. She's ready, she's willing to start now. All you have to do is say yes, oh yes for her. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um Crystal, are there any additional speakers for C one and C two? Okay. Um now we're gonna go to the candidates. There are six candidates. You will have five minutes. If you could please come to the podium, I will call you up. Please speak directly into the, into the microphone. You have five minutes. Um Crystal will let you know when the five minutes are are up, but these are um that your five minutes. So I'm first going to call Mister Jason Richard Awala. Awala. Is Mister Jason Richard here? Uh Crystal, and do we not know if he was here? Or is he online? Give me one sec. Okay. Um Ms. Kelsey Eno.
Everyone, um I think I first just would like to say thank you to everyone that spoke on my behalf today. Um it's very emotional, and everyone that did speak, I thank you from the bottom of my heart because it it is truly um who I am and what I've been working for for the last, I, forever. Um so I have prepared a speech for you today. Um good morning. My name is Dr. Kelsey Eno. I attended a community college because I didn't know what I wanted to be or where I wanted to go. I failed and succeeded while trying to navigate my path. Now, I am a proud California Community College graduate who has dedicated my career to the community college system. I am also Yonsei, fourth generation Japanese American. My father is a Vietnam War veteran, my stepfather a conscientious objector, and my parents were public school teachers. Because of injustice, my great-grandparents, grandparents, aunts and uncles were incarcerated for no crimes committed during World War Two because of American concentration camps. I'm here before you today because I come from generations of leaders and advocates. I value the community college, and in my fifteen years as a counselor, I see firsthand on a daily basis how provide opportunities and access for students. For LACC, I see the uniqueness of the nine campuses. And as trustee, I want to ensure we provide proper services and programming to support each college. As a tenured faculty member at El Camino College, I have served on several committees. Key things that I've been involved with are the Development Amana, a native Hawaiian Pacific Islander program, accreditation, curriculum, planning and budget, staff, faculty, and administrative hiring committees, and college council. Key leadership positions I hold are I'm the faculty representative for my foundation board of directors, and I am president of my faculty union, AFT thirteen eighty-eight. I frequently volunteer for leadership roles because I enjoy new challenges, and they strengthen my understanding of the community college system. Through these positions, I have facilitated cultural shifts, increased communication, efficiency, and respect. I am able to build bridges with other departments, divisions, trustees, administrators, employees, and students. I also create a safe and open space for all participants to be acknowledged and heard. With an organic history of community and educational advocacy, I am a true stakeholder who genuinely cares about the success of the district and the community that it serves. Serving on LACC board is a challenge that not many understand today. Some of the concerns and critical issues for the district are coming out of COVID and stabilization, housing and food insecurities for students, your decline in enrollment, and the need to establish accountability. Any new trustee has the learning curve, but with our shared experiences, I will hit the ground running. As trustee, I will be the best person because I'm knowledgeable in the implementation of AB seven oh five, dual enrollment, non-credit, the college promise, and guided pathways. I have also represented faculty and lobbied in Sacramento to request changes to our funding formula and against Calbright. I fervently believe in the public school system, and I'm a true advocate for proper funding, services, and resources. Community college was the game changer for me. It helped me realize that I can have a profession, that I can help others figure out their passions in life and turn them into careers. The California Community Colleges provide access, upward mobility, and hope to the community. In twenty fourteen, I completed a doctorate in educational leadership to build stronger educational capital and to be an advocate for students beyond my daily one-on-one experiences as a counselor. I believe now is that time, and LACC board is the place that I can make a difference. Board members are the decision-makers that will have a lasting effect on the district. I will be dedicated to our causes and advocate for students, so please consider me Kelsey Eno for this appointment. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Eno. Char- Charles Lenderblatt. Mister Lenderblatt, you uh also have five minutes.
Okay, Chancellor, Board of Trustees, thank you very much for providing me the opportunity to address you this morning regarding my application for the position of LA Community College District. Oh, you should have a copy of my CV and questionnaire in front of you that had the opportunity to use. I'm interested in this position because I believe I have great strengths to make a difference in this position. I've been describing different um um uh references and so forth as conscientious, dependable, detail-oriented, hard-working, methodical, and productive. I I have strong analytical quantitative research, writing and policy formulation skills, all of which I could bring to bear in the position there. Specifically, my educational background consists of a master of public policy degree from the University of Southern California's Saul Price School of Public Policy, as well as a bachelor of arts in economics and political science from Northwestern University. I was a member of the Association for Public Policy Analysis and Management. I'm a native and lifelong resident of Southern California, having largely attended Los Angeles Unified School District schools. Most recently, from August twenty nineteen through January twenty twenty, I've served as a statistician at National Tax Experts analyzing marketing data to help bring the company more clients. Prior to this, from November and December twenty sixteen, I was an economist at UCLA Anderson Forecast, and I prepared a report entitled The Hartford Project Final Report: Search for the Minimum Wage Effect Amongst Californias in the ICS Three-Digit Sectors with the Lowest Weekly Wages. Earlier before that, from March nineteen ninety-nine to September two thousand and two, I was a research assistant at RAND, where I had the upper responsibility for data collection, data management, analysis, and writing up different sections of research reports for a number of different projects um relating to economic, financial, and organizational policy areas, including purchasing and supply management, strategic sourcing, reserve recruiting, core equities analysis. Before that, from October ninety-five to March ninety-nine, I was a research assistant at the Milken Institute, working in areas related to um economic uh after having served as a subcontractor for two consulting firms, Hamilton Benefits and Allsler, and Cosmo and Associates. And in the years between my random employment and today, I've often served on two different boards of directors, specifically first through four different periods of service. I've been on the board of the Mid-City West Community Council, one of some ninety-nine neighborhood councils which have been certified within the city of Los Angeles. Always a renters rep, then at large rep, then business rep, and then renters rep again. Through the service, I've demonstrated my experience working with diverse communities. As the Mid-City West Community Council Board of Directors, on which I served, is one of the largest, most diverse neighborhood council boards in the city of Los Angeles, formerly at forty-five seats and currently at thirty-five seats. Serving on this council, I have at times been called upon to demonstrate my leadership on policy formulation. Through my services as First Rice Chair, as a member of its committees, as well as through my services as Chair of various committees. At different points in time, I was Chair of the Election Committee and the Bylaw and Grievance Committee, as well as Chairman of the Planning and Land Use Committees, uh with Community Plan Draft Environmental Impact Report Working Group. Another policy success came a few years ago for two Mid-City West Community Council Committees, Planning and Land Use and Trans Streets Day, formed a special joint committee to consider the proposed Academy Museum of Motion Pictures in our neighborhood. I was part of a smaller working group of this committee that was involved in reviewing the project's nine-volume draft environmental impact report and attempting to develop a response for the full board to consider. Several weeks or more, I threw myself into reviewing this DEIR. I was the only member on the special joint committee to order a hard copy of this document, which stacked about fourteen inches in its entirety from the floor. Didn't read it cover to cover, but I had a sense of what sections, parts were critical, and two motions that came out of that working group didn't quite capture the right response, and so I developed a comprehensive motion that better characterized and explained the many concerns which our Mid-City West stakeholders had uh with the project um over the, over the five months that we were considering the matter. And the motion was defeated on a six-five vote of the spe- of the special joint committee, but it served the important role of allowing our council to take the time to develop appropriate recommendations for our community, which which were to oppose the project as proposed, but to support and alter it over the museum and the May Company Wilshire Building in its entirety. And I also attended the various decision-makings meetings of this uh that that were related to this project. And I also have served on the Greater Los Angeles Area, and so Board of Directors in various capacities. Um invol- involved in that and is representing the interests of the Mid-City area and acting as administrator for GLAM in the Mid-City area and to schedule
Thank you very much.
official event.
Thank you very much. Okay. Uh and just so the 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 potential candidates know, we're going in alphabetical order. That's uh, that's the way we're we're going. Next, it's going to be Graciela Ortiz.
Good morning, I'm a bit shorter, so let me just move the mic down. Good morning. I'm Graciela Ortiz. I want to thank you for the opportunity to address the board and all LACC family. Today, you have a tough decision to make. You have to pick one person to serve on this very important board with you. And I'm here to ask you to consider me for that appointment, as education isn't just my passion, it's my foundation. I've been an educator for fifteen years with LAUSD as a People's Services and Attendance Council, now coordinator, an elected official for seven. I'm currently the mayor of the city of Huntington Park. Both of these roles have given me the experience to stand before you today, but my upbringing gave me the desire to serve. I'm a daughter of immigrant parents from Mexico. I'm the youngest of four, raised by a single mother, and first in my family to go to college. My passion for education started at a young age when I realized that it would be my ticket to a better life. I attended all public schools in LAUSD. And after graduating from Huntington Park High School, I obtained my sociology degree from my dream school, UCLA. I went on to get a master's degree in social work from Cal State Long Beach, and I'm now a licensed clinical social worker with the state of California. I always say, I'm one of the lucky ones, because fifty percent of my high school classmates didn't graduate high school. And those that did, many didn't meet the requirements for a four-year university. And for many, community colleges change their lives. As a People's Services and Attendance Council for LAUSD, I've worked in various communities, breaking down every possible barrier that impedes students from being successful in school, whether it's crisis intervention, mental health services, linkage to resources, or case management. I've been blessed to work in communities such as Wilmington, Gardena, Huntington Park, and now I work with all the southeast Los Angeles, east Los Angeles, Borough Heights, and the San Antonio communities. I've seen firsthand how community college system has been the save, the lifesaver for so many students and how the programs that you provide make such an impact that improves the quality of life for so many. Being an educator gives you the experience in the field and the understanding of what students need to be successful. There are two major issues affecting our community college system today. Declining enrollment and not being adequately funded. As a Board of Trustee, I will be the advocate that ensures that our community college system is always a topic of conversation when it comes to funding and not an afterthought. LACC serves so many, but at this time, during a pandemic, every school system is struggling with enrollment. So as educators, we have to work harder in promoting the great educational programs on all our campuses. I know the struggle as a PSA coordinator, it's what I do on a daily basis. My career experiences and my elected official experiences gives me the tools and knowledge to hit the ground running on day one. As a city council member and mayor, I oversee the city manager, city department directors, to include our chief of police, and work hand in hand with our unions and any units. After all, I've been a proud UTLA member of fifteen years and understand the importance of working together. I have helped, in the seven years in office, I have helped balance a city budget that is approximately eighty million dollars every year. I've created policies I've created policy that provides a voice to all stakeholders in our community. I helped bring back city commissions and made sure that they were reflective of our community, so we found a way to allow undocumented residents to serve. On our commissions as volunteers. This caused some waves with anti-immigrant individuals outside of our city. But at the end of the day, our community is all represented and has a voice. Collaboration and involving all stakeholders in decision making is what makes any organization successful. Because even though all stakeholders may not agree on everything, they will agree on one thing. That student success is our mission and priority, and together we can make a difference in their lives. I know that today's decision will not be easy. But I'm just here to tell you that I'm ready to serve. And it would be an honor to be able to represent and be a voice for the students, faculty and communities of LACC D. Thank you for your time and consideration, and thank you for all that you do. You are appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ortiz. Chelsea Arucha?
Good morning. Good morning, trustees, Mr. Chancellor, faculty, staff, students, labor representatives and community members. My name is Chelsea Arucha, and I hope to persuade you to appoint me for the LACC D Board of Trustee position. As the first in my family to go to college and having been raised by a disabled, single mother. I was at a disadvantage when it came to planning for enrolling in and completing college. And community college was my only choice. As a low-income student in California, I was blessed with the Board of Governor's fee waiver and a Cal Grant that covered my tuition and books. But like many LACC D students, I still had to work to pay for food, rent, bills and other family obligations. Technically, I made it. After two years, I transferred to a four-year college. And two years later, I graduated with a bachelor's degree. But that was a feat of extraordinary proportion. I learned later that it had very little to do with how well I performed academically. And everything to do with how well I navigated and understood a very complex system that was set up for me to fail. Now, with a master's degree in public administration, I am the most highly educated person in my family. College opened doors for me that I never knew existed, but that was not the case for many of my peers. Community college, though it has long attracted students facing barriers to traditional educational routes. Has itself proven to be yet another obstacle, an expensive one financially and emotionally. Too many students are clocking in and out of college without goals or guidance. They're sleeping in their cars or on couches, they're hungry and they're tired. They're too overwhelmed by the system to advocate for themselves, and they're already very sure that this system will not work for them, and they're not wrong. LACC D entered this strategic plan in twenty eighteen with a completion rate hovering around forty percent for all students. And this number represents a massive equity gap. White students who make up fourteen percent of the student body complete at a rate of fifty-four percent. While Hispanic, Black and Pacific Islander students that make up almost seventy, seventy percent of the student body. Complete at rates of thirty-seven, thirty-three and twenty percent respectively. By contrast, as a college success advisor. I led hundreds of students from similar backgrounds to a ninety percent completion rate. Proving that every student, no matter their background, can succeed with the right support. Community college is failing the majority of the students that need it most, and it is a moral issue. We should be uncomfortable when we hear those numbers, and we should employ all of our resources to combat these pervasive institutional inequities. In the last five years, thanks to many of you on the board, thanks to the citizens of this community and policymakers, many important reforms have been passed. That could move the needle significantly on student success and completion. The time is now to evaluate these programs and make adjustments to achieve maximum results. I will join other trustees with the courage to analyze those programs and. Current yielding results and relentlessly improve them. As trustee, I will work with the board to make student-centered policy and funding decisions. Laser-focused on data-driven solutions for the issues that contribute to the equity gap. As trustee, I will oversee successful implementation of the Guided Pathways Program and hold the district accountable for its focus on equity for the most marginalized students. I will make sure every student can take advantage of quality one-on-one academic career and personal support. I will monitor and evaluate the impact and effectiveness of the Los Angeles College Promise Program with a focus on first-year math and English success. And lastly, I will increase the pipeline for and timely completion of certificates and two-year pathways that lead to living wage jobs in this region. As trustee, I would challenge LACC D to be the institution of choice for fair chances. For those who have been previously incarcerated, were struggling with homelessness, aging out of the foster system, overcoming substance abuse and trauma. Or living in limbo with an uncertain immigration status. With a little intentionality, LACC D could be just the support they need. With great teachers, caring staff, state-of-the-art career training programs, and a mission to change lives and changing Los Angeles. This district has the power to unlock the city's economic potentials like never before seen. Because I received a college degree, I was able to reverse poverty in my family in a single generation. And that is the promise of quality education. I will work tirelessly to make good on that promise for all students in the district. Starting with those left out and left behind by current programs and policies. Community college should be a first choice, not a last one. We owe it to our students, their families and this city to bring up a generation of young people that are not only ready for the workforce. But can also reverse the cycle of poverty for their families. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Julie Stromberg?
She was online, but she's not off.
Okay, and just to make sure, Jason Aula? Okay, are there any other other candidates? Right, seeing none. So trustees, I'm gonna go slow, forgive me. May I have a motion to open nominations to the fill the vacancy in seat number seven through December ninth, twenty twenty-two?
Uh so moved trustee Bona, this is trustee Hoffman.
Okay, trustee Hoffman, second? Trustee Henderson? Alright. So. I'm now going to then try um. Open the nominations for trustee for this position. Are there any nominations?
Trustee Bona, can I just make a quick comment before we open nominations?
Sure.
Okay, um first of all, I I'm uh coming to you from Zoom, so thank you very much. This is trustee Hoffman, and. I just want to thank all of the candidates today. And to say, this is my second time going through an appointment process. And I am just so impressed with everyone who came before the board today, and I want to just. Thank everybody for their time and really just express how I was very impressed with the candidates. And you're right, we do have a difficult decision to make today. Thank you for allowing me some time, trustee Bona.
Thank you, and I and procedurally, before getting nominations. Again, we had a first and a second, and we need a roll call on 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 the motion to open nominations to fill the vacancy. Let me read something real quick. Pass or fail on on a motion to open nominations, if at least four regular trustees vote in favor, the president would proceed to the next step. If there are not four firm enough votes, the president should declare the motion fails and proceed with the rest of the agenda. So roll call on the motion to fill the vacancy in seat number seven through December ninth of two thousand and twenty-two.
Trustee Martinez advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bona?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Okay, now I will open up the nomination, the the nominations for uh for trustee nominations. Oh, trustee Henderson, and when you please make the nomination. Um if you could say it completely and move the name, then be appointed to fill the vacancy number seven through December ninth, two thousand and twenty-seven. Trustee Henderson?
I would like to also thank all of the applicants um seeking to serve on this board because it is a tremendous responsibility. As the only African-American member of this board, I do understand how important representation is. And I also have a great understanding of the the need to work collaboratively in order to. Move um move issues and do what this board has set out to do, which is to support the students. In and outside of the LACC D. So with that, I would like to make a motion to um appoint Ms. Doctor Kel. To the Board of Trustees to fill the vacancy for seat seven through December nine?
December ninth?
Through December ninth of twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Yeah, board member Vella second uh made the motion. Uh I'm sorry, board member Henderson made the motion and board member Vella second. Roll call? Oh, oh, are there any other, are there any other nominations? Oh, no, we go one by one. Depending on the. Yeah, one by one. Yeah, we run this one, one by one. Yeah, is there any discussion?
Yes, President Bona?
Yeah, go on.
I want to echo trustee Hoffman and trustee Henderson, uh second vice president Henderson. And their and their comments on, this is fantastic, this is democracy. Uh we saw today, I mean, people who have not only obstacles, but have the credentials to be able to. Serve in this uh seat. I think every single person that spoke today. Is someone that would easily be able to fill this vacancy, and so. You know, that really does put a smile on my face, even though you can't see it because of the mask. But um it it is something to to be said about how strong our pool is. Um when it came to the vacancy as the only LGBT on the uh member uh on the board. As well, I believe the only LGBT open LGBT trustee in history. It is very important for representation, um but I also believe that. Um we have a lot to climb and a lot to do. We need to increase the amount of women on this board as well. So with that being said, I'm very, very happy to have seconded this motion, and thank you all for who came. Uh very impressive, thank you.
Trustee Veras?
Thank you. Uh to those that are in the audience here and that had the. A chance to speak to us and give us uh your talk. First of all, I wanted to thank you for the materials. I think all of us in our due diligence had a chance to read. Your questionnaires, your response, uh the presentation of yourself and your qualifications um for these positions. And um I've had a chance to um be part of a. Be part of at least one other vacancy appointment and had a chance to be in the audience for at least two more. And um and and while this process didn't have the volume, certainly it did not lack in quality. It was um tremendous to see the thoughtfulness um in in the comments and um. And I I think I've had at least a couple of interactions with uh with with the candidate, even the ones that didn't get a chance to speak today. Out in their public lives, and uh it's a group, I hope that whatever the final results of today continue to. Be vested and committed in public education, in the public policy side of it, governance side of it. Because frankly, having sincere, thoughtful individuals with the with depth. And um and wonderful concepts to offer is 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 in dire need across the board. Because that would take us in the coming out of of the COVID experiences. As in enrollment crisis, as in relevancy crisis. And so many of the points, and you didn't get a chance to see um your colleagues, but those of you that spoke. To see the head nodding behind you as you gave your points was was really fantastic, because I can tell. That from uh from this group here presenting, uh there is some incredible connectivity and thoughtfulness. Because we're 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 joint and linked together in in an effort to really um have public education at this level. Have a true impact, be of service to others. Um and and I I'm really actually quite excited, so in a sense, although we get to point one. My hope is that all of you would continue to be engaged and feel like you can be part of this institution in some form, shape, space. And and to also acknowledge the fact that I'm a whole one out of trustee wellness history and and and. There have been times when individuals have applied to be a trustee and do not get the call. But eventually either become elected um or become a member of this institution and become part of the call to service that's here. And so um I I think there's always something extremely positive to take away. From the experience you had here, and I look forward to, for those that don't know outside or have been interacted with, a chance to. Get to know you and interact with you and your community and the things that you do, because certainly I I take it as you're all in it for the long haul. And and that's um an amazing and important thing to um to have. Because we're all in it for the long haul, and this institution, um we believe is in it for the long haul, and and we desire for it to be. Of of a substantially high level of impact for our community in Los Angeles here. For coming and thank you for the service and thank you for everything. It it was, it was certainly eye-opening getting a chance to read and listen to just see how much passion there is with. Your peers, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Still interesting, Martinez?
Thank you, President Bona. Um as student trustee, I felt that it was important for me to make a comment um to the candidates. Thank you so much. I really enjoyed listening to many of your speeches, and um as a student, I want to thank you for the amazing advocacy work that. You do. I want to thank you for how you champion change for students and for uh those in our community. It means a lot. And in many ways to echo what uh trustee Veras just said. I hope that you stay involved. Unfortunately, we can only elect one person today. And um this is a very hard decision. I've been sitting up here racking my brain, but I do know that um many of you would be very fit to sit on this board. And I would have been very honored to work with many of you. Um and I hope that. Those that um as trustee Veras said, do not get the call today. Do try again, um because as it was announced, this is going to just be to fill the vacancy till December. So there, of course, is another opportunity. And I just hope that. You stay involved because, as I said, many, I think, would be very good fits on this board, and. I think you could do the students very well. So thank you so much for being here today. That's all that I had to say.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Well, I will say, uh yes, in two thousand and eight, um I went for an appointment. It it did not, did not occur. Uh the person who got the appointment did an excellent job and is now in the assembly as well. You know, so you know, the, you know, there there is a trajectory, and I did want to thank everyone for the time. Respecting our time limits and respecting the process relationships are 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 made. Seeing no other comment, uh roll call?
Student trustee Martinez advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bona?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Trustee, you know, congratulations. So we will, we will do, we will do the mechanics of this. We will do a ceremonial oath of office um right now. At that, at the end of the oath of office. Appointee Eno will immediately convert into trustee, you know. She will take her seat on the right-hand side, then we'll immediately recess until one P M. So trustees, let's head on up with the chancellor to the oath.
Colleagues, friends, members of the LACC D family, very pleased.
Our colleagues, friends, members of the L A C C D family, very pleased on behalf of the Board of Trustees to conduct the ceremonial oath of office for the governing board member, Kelsey Eno of the Los Angeles Community College District. So please raise your right hand. Hi, and please say your name.
Hi, Kelsey Eno.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of California.
Against all enemies foreign and domestic
All enemies foreign and
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
To the Constitution of the United States and the
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of California.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge
And I will well and faithfully discharge
The duties upon which I'm about to enter
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
As trustee of the L A Community College District.
As, as, as trustee of the L A Community College District.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
No, I mean, thank you so much. Um, thank you to all of you. I've, you know, I've gone to speak with you and meet you, and I look forward to just working dedicated to this process with you. So thank you so much for your faith in me. I will not let you down. Oh, yeah, so my, my family is here today. My Auntie Joanne Kumamoto and my partner Marla Lam. Thank you.
All right, so we'll take a seat. So we're gonna, I just want her to be seated officially. There is a reason it's called being seated. Um, I just want to make sure that, um,
Have a seat, have a seat, have a seat.
She, uh, Now, the, um, we're going to take a recess through one P M, then we're gonna do committee of the whole. Um, then we're going to, at, at that point, start. So just, so the public knows, um, some of you, I think I was confused in terms of the way the public speakers are gonna go. Please follow the administrative agenda, they know ninety percent more. So that being said, we are going to recess, um, until one P M. Thank you very much.